Good evening. We have called the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have all council members in attendance. And with that, we will turn immediately to our opening ceremony. We turn to Councilmember Patrice Manu.
Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, we have some special guests with us here today, and I'd like to have them stand and be recognized for examples of leadership in our community. These are student body officers from Hunter High School. We have Jenny Williams, Noah Fugetti, Abigail Aleano, Metalid Peralta, Maria Cruz, Lenny Villegas, and Kylie Van Damme. And we would like to ask Kylie to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening.
Will you all rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Then, next, we have our minutes of September 18th. A motion from the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments? Looks like they're okay. Then, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Angels pose say no. It passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Next, we go into our comment period. Because I see a new name on the list, it's not one of those who come every week and speak. Why, I would mention that your comments should be limited to five minutes. It is not a question-and-answer period, or a discussion, or debate. It's your five minutes to use as you want to present information. And that can be on any issue. To remind you that our comments, if it's not on our agenda, must be severely restricted because of state law, that we cannot have any policy discussions. Maybe some brief comments from our city reporter, our assistant city manager, might be appropriate, but usually, we don't say too much. If the issue is one that we feel we need to address, we will place it on our agenda for our next study meeting. With that information then... Oh, and if you're here to speak to the public hearing on the Magna Mosquito Abatement District proposal, that is separate. We will invite people to come and speak on that separately. Okay? So, we're doing the general one first. So, with that then, and there's a timer here. If you need to go with that. Anyway, Oscar Galizia? Okay. He will come up here to that. And if I didn't get the name right, you can correct me. That's okay.
Hello, everybody. Gentles and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Oscar Galizia. I migrate here around 18 years ago from Mexico City. I am proudly a United States citizen now, and I am a citizen on the Chesterville area. I've been living there for over 12 years. And then, recently, I have an incident that happened that I need to bring out to you all. I need help. What happened is that I am going to school. I'm trying to become an engineer. English is my second language, and it's hard for me sometimes to explain, or to be able to explain myself. Please bear with me and be patient. I am divorced dad of two kids. And I live in the Chesterville area. I live off of student loans. I have hard time with money-wise, and schools getting very hard. I work as a part-time minimum job. I have an internship as an engineer. And then, I go full-time to school. I had an incident happen in my house. Every month, the first Monday of every month, there has a waste collector to come over, and you put a pile of garbage on the street, and then they come over and get it. And then, it was a routine for me to put my pile on the street. This past Labor Day was Monday, and then they didn't come and get it. I call on Tuesday to the West Valley City to find out why they didn't come and get it. And they say, "We don't have nothing to do with it. You have to call the waste management company." I don't know what is the name of the company that comes and collects the garbage. So, I called them, and they said, "Well, if we have to pick it up, we're gonna come and get it tomorrow." The guys did not finish the job on the Labor Day, but they will come and get it. So, I let that time pass. And then, when I called on Tuesday, because the pile was not picked up on Monday since it was a Labor Day, when I called on Tuesday, the pile was getting bigger. There is a people who have been dumping stuff on the pile of garbage. So, I called on Tuesday, and I say, "There's other people dumping the pile in here, and there's not getting picked up." So, they didn't come and get it. I called again on Friday, and they didn't come and get it. So, I got a ticket for $100 for the outstanding pile. I did my part. I called the waste management to let them that the pile was there. I never got a notice that the pile was out of complaints, that he's got a ticket straight for $100. And then, when I got the ticket, I come to the city. I talked to the engineer department. They sent me from here from the front desk. They sent me up to the engineer department. And then, we were able to locate the sanitation department as they was in charge. So, when I talked to the secretary, I'm extremely busy. Like, you guys can tell I just barely made it from school, and actually, from coming up from a physics test. I went upstairs and met the engineer guy. Helped me to find out locating the department, which was sanitation. I went to work, and a guy from sanitation called me. And he said, "You are out of complaint. You have a ticket. We're not gonna help you with anything." I think I'm probably wrong. This is not right. I have never had an issue with a pile that goes on the streets. I have been educated on certain things because I own a house, and because of the time I'm locked, there are some things that I get. Let it happen in the house. And then, I love building cars, and I love fixing up things. I'm an engineer. I'm trying to become an engineer. So, I always have projects in my house. I have an RV that I wanted to remodel so I can go on vacation with my kids. I have boats. My house is a project house. So, basically, I'm here for your help. I feel attacking by the city. I know what happened not long ago with the city employee, which I feel so sad for losing their life for someone. You just feel against the city feeling attacking him all the time and single him out. Sometimes, I feel that way when it gets escalated and don't get any help. If I had the money, I would not be here. I don't have the money to just pay someone to come and collect the garbage. But plus, I'm getting a ticket on it. So, I'm presenting this to you guys. I talked to someone on the phone. They were not really nice. Some person from the sanitation. I was trying to locate it. I have been standing for my physics test. I'm really apologize. I just barely come out of my physics test. So, I cannot give you the names because I was listening in the record when I talked to that person. But I have the text, the days when I called West Valley on Tuesday, the hour, how long you take the call. When I called the sanitation, when I recall the sanitation, and no one told me. I believe the sanitation would tell me. Your piles are a complaint. No, West Valley, no one told me the piles are a complaint. On my side, I put the effort to call and find out why they're not getting picked up, but no one told me anything. So, I'm just presenting this. I don't know if he is right. Also, when the sanitation guy called me, he wasn't helping. He was showing like as an authority, like not being a customer service, more like that. You mean, his fault, kind of the matching for you. Plus, he's irresponsible. So, it's not whatsoever customer service. And their city employees, we pay them, they get paid for taxes. They're not in my service, but they the service of the community to make it better. I just want to present this is my case, and see if you guys can be able to help me out. I know it is not your department, it's not your responsibility. I'm just feeling so frustrated. And I can relate the frustration with the guy who went over his limits, saying the city has been caressing him for over 15, 20 years, and he went nuts. And then, again, he did something with it. But this is what I wanted to present to you guys. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Sir, anyone else here with public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. And Mr. Isaac, any comments?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment, Oscar, right?
Correct.
You and today, our good mayor, when we were in a meeting, and our mayor suggested to me that we need to do a lot more with regards to allowing our citizens to understand and to be a little bit more compassionate with people who have issues like the one you just brought up. Has the garbage already been picked up, or it has not?
No, has not.
So, I, first of all, want to commend you for coming here this evening. Yes, we do have laws, and we do have ordinances that need to be obeyed, but under certain circumstances, we need to also work with people. So, I will direct a member of our staff to make sure that, before you leave tonight, that they can get with you, in fact, maybe even now, to make sure that we know where you live and understand fully the problem that you're having, and then maybe we can help you the best we can. Thank you.
Is this an issue, and we want to help with that, but is this a city issue, or is it technically a...
Sounds like it's a little bit of both.
A little bit of both. Okay, so, maybe our staff and representatives from ACE could just take a few minutes to visit and see if we can get it cleared up.
Thank you.
Okay? Because it just so happens that they're here tonight, too. So... Councilmembers, any comments? With that then, we go to item seven on our agenda, and that's the Mosquito Abatement District Propose Top Property Tax Increase: A Report to the West Valley City Council. And we're grateful to have Janice Fisher here, who was a former member of this council. And so, we very much appreciate seeing you again.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and citizens. My name is Janice Fisher. I live at 6411 West, 3785 South, in the Stone City, 8412A. With me here tonight is Ryan Lusti. Ryan is the manager of the Magna Mosquito Abatement District, and he's here in case you have any technical questions. So, I'm here tonight to represent the Magna Mosquito Abatement District. And when we propose the tax increase, we're required by law to come to all the entities that are certified for the Magna Mosquito Abatement District in a public hearing and give them the information. So, the Magna Mosquito Abatement District is proposing tax increase for 2019. Magna Mosquito Abatement District has not raised taxes in 30 years, dating back to 1988. During these years, we have been very frugal with our revenue. We have done our best to protect the public from mosquito-borne diseases, and we have kept the costs low. However, this past year, the Salt Lake City Mosquito Abatement District annexed a portion of the Magna Mosquito Abatement District, changing both the district boundaries, changing Salt Lake and our district boundaries. Salt Lake City Mosquito Abatement District took over the northeast portion of the Magna District, and in so doing, Magna lost 1/3 of the revenue from mosquito abatement. On top of breaking operations, costs, and Salt Lake annexation, we feel that we will not be able to serve the public in an effective manner if we keep the current tax rate. Therefore, we are proposing an increase. The property, a property value that $202,100 has a taxable value of $111,155 and is currently paying $4.55 a year for their mosquito abatement services. With the proposed tax increase, the same household will be paying $8.33 a year. Magna Mosquito Abatement District passed a resolution in their September board meeting to the intent to increase property taxes from .00041, generating revenue of $274,182, generating revenue of $501,262, which is an increase of $227,370, or an increase to the citizens of $3.78 per household per year. If you're interested, I can give you some information on some of the other mosquito abatement districts in the area, and what their costs are. And if you'd rather not do that tonight, then this is our presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. With that introduction, then, we probably should go to public input.
Okay.
And, you know...
Thank you.
Just, yeah, just have a seat, and we'll see if there's anyone here to...
Then, Ryan.
Do you want him to make some comments, too?
Oh, yes. Lucy, if I can answer, may you?
Okay. Okay. So, what we'll do is we'll open the public comment period. We will accept public input regarding this proposal. Is there anyone here to speak to this proposal? And it looks like the answer is no. So, seeing no one, I will close the public input portion. It's closed. We'll bring it back to the council. Council, any questions or comments?
Just point out, Mayor, that despite the buzz about mosquito abatement, we don't actually take any action as a body on this hearing. Just receive the information.
Yes, the legislature passed a requirement that when a special district like Mosquito Abatement District, that they had to go to the elected officials within that, like in our case, here at the city, to present it. We do not have to approve it, but we do have to hear it. They couldn't get it passed if we had to approve it, so... So, we just have to hear it. But we do appreciate hearing, and it's nice to have the information. And so, anything else? Anyone else?
We're always available anytime.
Thank you. Appreciate that. With that then, since there are no questions or comments, is there anything else you need to add? You almost look like you were thinking this.
I don't know. I just take it a deep breath.
Oh. With that then, we thank you for your presentation. And since there's no action required, we will move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you very much for coming tonight. And Janice, it was good to see you again.
Thank you for having us.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, item eight, is... And I guess you let the Hunter High School folks know that they're welcome to stay, but as you can see, when people are finished, they leave. No one pays any attention to it. So, with that then, back to our ordinance, ordinance 18-36. And I'm looking out in the hall, and are we okay to go ahead? Because some of your people are out in the hall. Okay. I just didn't want us to go ahead and start doing things, and they were saying, "Wait a minute, wait a minute. We need to..."
We're good.
Because this will affect them. Ordinance 18-36 will amend our municipal code to reflect some changes in the city's recycling program. This has generated a lot of discussion, this particular one. And we will have a resolution following this, similar to it. This particular proposal that is before us is a change because in recycling, there have been a lot of changes, a lot of costs have increased. A lot of things that were previously able to be recycled are no longer recyclable. In fact, the latest one I hear is paper is going down and almost isn't worth collecting anymore. So, there's significant changes taking place. As a result, there have been efforts made to clean up the recycle stream, the items that are put into the blue recycle containers. And so, warnings have been issued for people who put things in there that are not recyclable. As a result, some people have not been happy, and they wanted to get out of the recycling process. So, this particular proposal here is what would happen if we did allow people to opt-out, and as a result, then not pay for the recycling portion. Currently, our fee with recycling, the waste collection fee, is $14.50. If, in fact, we allow people to opt-out, and if it is similar to what has happened in other cities who have accepted this, they estimate approximately 25% of those who are participating in recycling would opt-out. If that holds true, and we did not charge them for the recycling portion, their fee would drop from $14.50 to $13. However, the cost of collecting recycling and going around the city does not really change. In fact, in order to cover the revenue loss there, we would need to increase the cost to others who are recycling to $15.50. So, the proposal before us is just that. So, the council has had a lot of discussion on this. There's another issue that we will deal with separately, but this one deals with essentially the opt-out and the fees charged to residents, both for those who opt-out and those who stay in. Have I pretty well covered it that? Anything else you think we ought to add to it? I tried to get it simple enough that those listening in can follow it, but, and I had to do that so I could follow. With that introduction then, to the council.
Mayor, I would hope that our residents don't see this as a financial incentive to not recycle. That's not the point of this. The point of this, in my mind, is as I clean up my recyclables and put them in my blue can, there is nothing I can do about my neighbor just filling his can with garbage, and then that whole truck goes to the landfill instead of being recycled. So, in order for us to be able, those who are interested in recycling, to be able to recycle, we need to clean the recycling stream. And the way to do that is to get those who don't participate to turn their can in, and by giving them a small financial incentive, I hope that they would do that. And then, I am willing personally to pay an extra $1.50 or so a month so that I can participate in recycling. And with that, I move for approval of ordinance 18-36.
Second.
It's property before us. Any further comments?
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that's really important to me and something that I've really grappled with the last couple of weeks. And I'm concerned about the message we're sending to our residents. But I understand the need to improve our stream of recycling goods. And so, I'm gonna vote in favor of this ordinance. But I hope that our staff will make a concerted effort to shape that message and encourage our residents to not only recycle appropriately, but also reduce their use of materials and do what we can for our environment.
Anyone else? Seeing no further comments, then, to our assistant city recorder. Further roll call of...
Councilman Patrice Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beeler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norville?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is item ordinances. We have ordinance 18-36. In this case, this is still related to recycling. This would amend our code again to reflect changes in our agreement with ACE Disposal. Oh, excuse me. I'm on resolution. Thank you. That's why they have to keep an eye on me. Sometimes, I skip things, and sometimes, I think, do things twice. So, let's go to resolution 18-172. This is to amend a contract we have with ACE Disposal, Inc. regarding our curbside recycling services. So, let me get that up here. Now, on this one, an interesting thing is happening. Certainly, recycling, there are some things in which people could recycle and actually get money for. But that market changes. And what has happened, when we take overall, the fee for taking it to a recycling plant was $25 a ton when we entered into a contract with ACE. That has changed. They are now charging $55 a ton. That is a very significant change, an additional $180,000. Many companies are simply abandoning the recycling effort because it is not financially feasible for them to do it. We, however, do want to continue the program and encourage our citizens to do it and make that service available. And so, although we have a signed contract with ACE, we are looking to the future because we say, if they can't make money on it, it's gonna come a point where no one will do it. So, in order to continue this service, we are going to authorize the city to amend the contract, to increase it. And we actually went a little higher, up to $60. And they can work on that, and we'll see where things go. The intent being to continue our recycling program. Obviously, this additional $130,000 will have to come from somewhere. And so, we will address that. We might address it tonight. The average change on a consumer bill with this change would be approximately 50 cents per residence, per month. I got that right? And so, however, what we're dealing with right now on this is the actual contract with ACE. And since they don't have anything to do with how we deal with our residents, you know, those would kind of be two separate issues. Although, we will want to deal with that other one. And we may do something tonight, or may not. What's this?
The fee?
No.
We passed the fee schedule.
Did that include the 50 cents?
Yes, that will take care of the change.
It did?
Yeah.
It did include it? And so I've, okay, I'll accept that. I thought that the 50 cents was in addition, so, okay. I should pay more attention. Then with that, that will come. So with that, that's right. I would have thought we were doing it after, since we didn't know if we were going to do it, but anyway. Then I'll just be quiet and shut up and just turn it to the council. How's that?
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 18-172.
Second. Property before us, any further comments?
I think based on your comments, everybody should understand what we are attempting to accomplish here.
Yeah, okay. If you disregard the 50 cent part. I don't understand. Okay, with that then to our assistant city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Patrice Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Beeler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Now maybe I'll get back on track, now that the hard one's over. With that then, we go to resolution 18-176. This is to approve the purchase of a gymnastics podium and equipment from Bill Jacks. This is for the Maverick Center to be able to host additional events, specifically the possibility of hosting NCAA championships from Pac-12, U.S. gymnastics, and possibly others. The total cost on this is $109,214, and this looks like a very positive thing to do, to bring additional events to the Maverick Center. And we've looked at it, and it seems like a very positive thing to move forward on. With that then, introduction to the council.
I would move for approval of resolution 18-176.
Second. Property before us, any further comments or discussion?
Just like to say that I'm excited to see these events come to West Valley City.
Okay. With that then, to our assistant city recorder.
Councilman Patrice Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Beeler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, next is resolution 18-177. This is to approve a real estate agreement between our city and HP Utah Management for property at 2400 South, 4800 West. What we have here, this would bring in $8,000 in revenue. It is a small piece of land. When we were putting in, I guess it's called, is it the 2400 South Road? When that road was put in, there was discovered to be some problems, and we had to buy some extra land in order to make it work, and so we ended up owning a piece of land that was not necessary for the actual road. However, there's no way we can use that property. It's not large enough to put anything on, but an adjacent property owner can use the property as a part of their overall project, and so they have proposed paying us $8,000. And so I don't recall now what the size of that was, but it was...
Some acre.
What was it?
Three-quarters of an acre.
Three-quarters of an acre.
That had some contamination.
Yes.
That's not worth the price value.
Yes. When we purchased the property, as it turned out, there were tires and other items in there that make it non-suitable for any other use. And finding a willing buyer, it's nice to have a willing buyer.
It's an odd-shaped parcel that would be useless to anybody but the adjacent property.
Yeah. So that is the proposal before us to the council.
Move for approval of resolution 18-177.
Second.
Property before us then, any further comments? Seeing none, to our assistant city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Patrice Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Beeler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we go to our new business, item 10. We want to consider application S-10-2018 filed by Corbin Venion requesting final plat approval for Lake Park Commerce Center subdivision located at 5139 West, 2400 South. And if I can get the picture up, that'll help me explain it better as I remember. Okay. This particular piece of ground is north of the canal and bordering 2400 South, and by the way, directly adjacent to the piece of property that we just approved for sale. And so they're proposing, I think, if I remember right, it was segregating that into...
Or four different lots.
Four different lots. Yeah, three and then a little one. And in order to make that more available, there are not a lot of organizations that want a piece of property that large. They feel this will better serve their needs, and that's fine. So this proposal is to approve that, and with that, to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of application S-10-2018.
Second. Property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our assistant city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Patrice Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Beeler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next is application PUD-1-2018 filed by Brad Reynolds. It's final plat approval on the villages on 27, a tiny unit development at 4530 South, 2700 West. This is a large piece of ground that most everyone knows. It's directly north of the driving range, the driver's license division there, and has been a horse pasture, horses there for a number of years, and they are proposing to develop that. And let's see. Okay, every time I move it, it disappears. Let's see. This is a project that's been before us before, and we've looked at this, and we feel it is a good use of the property there. 147 units. There'll be one and two-story units with as many units, there are two, three, four, five, and six units in a building. Rambler going from, there are 1,250 square feet, 1,200 square foot in the basement. Two stories range from 1,450 to 1,540 square feet, and then an additional 650 to 750 square feet in the basement. They all have two-car garages, and a lot of very nice features. We're excited here because of the many good things that they're doing in this project. We think it's a real plus because it is above the standard of many of the projects already in West Valley. With that introduction then to the council.
I would move for approval of application PUD-1-2018.
Property before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, to our assistant city recorder.
Councilman Patrice Manu.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang.
Yes.
Councilman Beeler.
Aye.
Councilman Hune.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld.
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that completes our scheduled business, and next week we have a reading after, not this week, so. With that then, any final comments from the council? If there aren't any, then a motion. I'm all officially adjourned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say no. It passes unanimously. We're adjourned.